We will go ahead and get started. The Monday, November 22nd, 2021 special meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 5:15 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Thank you.
Commissioners, we have an agenda this evening. Do we have a motion on this agenda? Commissioner Hill?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Announcements, I have none for this evening. Brings us to our first section of public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address when making comments. If you'd like to make a comment, go ahead and approach the podium.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor, City Managers. My name is Paul Schumacher. I was a resident of Marquette until recently. I had to move out of town due to the problem with affordable housing. I went to school here back in the 70s, and when I went to school, it was really nice because you could always find a job, you could always find a place to live. It was always somewhere you could go that was affordable to live. When I came back here after being gone for many years, I moved back 11 years ago, I really was amazed at how high the rents had gone in this town. The cheapest rent I could get back then, 11 years ago, was $5.50 for a one-bedroom apartment. And since then, those same apartments are now well over $1,000 a month. It's not just due to COVID either. It's got to do with a lot of greed, with outside investors, which I'll get into at the end of the meeting because I wanted to talk more about that then. But affordable housing, to me, is somewhere that you can have a job, a decent job, and be able to at least get a decent apartment. The cheapest one-bedroom apartment in this town is now $800 a month. Three months ago, that same apartment was $565. They saw that everybody else was raising the rents through the roof. They decided to do it too. Same thing with housing. When I moved back here, you could buy a house in the range from anywhere from $60,000 to $150,000 and get a pretty nice, decent place to live. That is impossible now in Marquette. The cheapest house I've seen on the market is $275,000. And that's just in 10 years' time. That's not due to just inflation. I believe there is an element of greed in Marquette, that there's large apartment buildings going up by large investors, most of them from out of town. All that money is going out of town. None of that money is staying in this community for all those places for rents. The big box down here, $2,000, $3,000 a month, that's wonderful for people who are making a whole lot of money. But I am now retired, unfortunately disabled, and so I'm unable to work. And I am stuck with my Social Security. I cannot live at Pine Ridge. I cannot live at Lake Superior Village. So I had to go outside of town. Fortunately, I found a place. Fortunately, we have a federal system called Section 8. So for elderly people, trying to find a place to live in this town is virtually impossible unless you're a rich, wealthy retiree with a lot of money. And these new apartments, for instance, don't help any of us. So what I've seen in that time period of 11 years, it is really shocking, and I don't see anything in the report that actually is going to fix anything here with the problem of affordable housing at this time. And I hope we can. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Name and physical address, please.
Geraldine Nalt, 1851 North McClellan Avenue in Marquette. I just want to make some general comments about the city of Marquette being what it is because of the policies and procedures that a lot of people, over the years, have put into different committees, different commissions, yourselves included, to make Marquette what it is so that when people look at Marquette, they want to come to Marquette and live here. Some of the recommendations in the Ad Hoc Housing Committee report recommend changes to the zoning and parking, et cetera. And I would like to just ask you to be, and I know the Planning Commission will be working on this also, to be very careful about what you take apart in the city of Marquette to make it affordable. We aren't the only community that is faced with this problem, and I'd hate to see Marquette throw out the baby with the bathwater, so to speak, to make more affordable housing. I think there are ways to do that without taking apart what has taken a long time to make Marquette a very livable, beautiful community. Thank you.
Margaret Brum.
Really, I'm not that choked up.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I dug out the Ad Hoc Housing Committee report again last night. It's probably the fifth or sixth time I've read it. And there's a section in there on recommendations, and as Ms. Nalt said, there's a whole bunch of recommendations to change fundamental documents within the city of Marquette. And I sat in on a Planning Commission meeting last week where we were told that as long as all the boxes were marked and all the documents were filled in, the Planning Commission had to approve these changes. So once again echoing what Geraldine Nalt just said, whatever you do here tonight will live on in history. And you have the opportunity to make positive change, but you're not going to make positive change unless you deal openly and notoriously with the history of the city. Last week, the Planning Commission approved a massive development on the way to the island. There is not one piece of paper, and I read them all, that mentions that it is across the street from the former Cliftstown Chemical property, which is still under observation for chemical leakage into Lake Superior. The phrase in the law, and I'm going to be using my legal degree here, is "failure to warn." If this city insists upon developing that lakeshore despite all the common sense that says it's a bad idea, and if this city doesn't have in its paperwork a document saying, hey, you're across the street from the most heavily contaminated site that is still under observation more than 60 years later, this city and all the taxpayers in it will be liable under the theory of failure to warn. And if you think I'm just talking to talk, my torts professor was Aaron Tursky. He was the gentleman who won the lawsuit against the Agent Orange producers because my former employer, Dow Chemical, found the dioxin in the Agent Orange, and instead of notifying the government it was there, called together the producers and told them to clean up their processes so it wasn't there. So he used the theory of failure to warn, and he won a huge amount of money. And all of these developers that cannot get to Marquette fast enough, there's a story right now in the news that says the hospital will be sold to Northern, the former hospital will be sold to Northern for $1. Wow. That's going to end well for everyone. But if you don't speak honestly to the developers, the renters, the people who are going to be in these properties, the liability for this city will destroy this city. Failure to warn is a legal concept, and you are all personally going to be held accountable for it too because you had knowledge, and I made sure that each of you got the email with the pictures in it. So I'm just telling you, before you casually do anything, consult your lawyers. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Dave Thompson? I'm a professional engineer. I develop...
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry. 3152 Island Beach Road.
Thank you.
I'm a professional engineer. I develop property all over the country. I've built eight houses in different parts of the country. We relocated here about 18 months ago. My wife is originally from Marquette. So I just wanted to mention to you that part of your affordable housing is an awful lot to deal with the regulations that you guys have in place. For us to build a house costs us 2.7 times as much per square foot in Marquette than it did in California. There's something wrong there. We spent over $45,000 designing legal fees just to get a variance to build on a piece of property. That's an awful lot of money. Now, I'm fortunate and have been blessed because, number one, I understand development rules. I also have been blessed with owning companies and having some extra money. $45,000 just to get a permit to build our house is unconscionable. It took us $3,000 to develop a plan that the arborist would approve. That's a significant amount of money. When you add in the regulatory permitting fees, design fees, and getting our final certificate of occupancy, we were at over 28% of our cost on our brand-new house that costs us 2.7 times as much per square foot to build in this city. 28% just on design fees, permitting fees, everything else. If you want to become affordable, you cannot have that type of burden. I work with builders all the time in the area, going, how do we get through this myriad of codes, inspectors, variances, everything else? And it's just totally unconscionable. If we didn't have a tie up here from a family perspective, we never would have started down this path. We spent over $200,000 on that stuff. It's a lot of money. Was here a couple weeks ago, the developer. He's already spent $800,000 on that one piece of property out there. That's money out of his pocket just to get to an approvable development. So take a look at that, please.
Anyone else for public comment? Going once, going twice. Public comment is now closed. That brings us to our consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Stonehouse?
We have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to our one and only new business item tonight, item number two, the Ad Hoc Housing Committee Final Report and Recommendations. This will require a roll call vote. I did just want to make a note that we're having a little bit of technical difficulties. Our video and our audio is coming through for those watching at home and on YouTube, but the presentation will not show. If you're listening, the presentation will be uploaded to the city website afterwards. So you won't be able to see the slides, but if you listen, you can hear it and see those visuals after the fact. First up, I will have our city manager introduce this topic, and then I believe Commissioner Bonzal, who was the chair of the committee, will give a presentation for us. Thank you, Commissioner Bonzal.
Perfect.
Go ahead, City Manager, Karen Kovacs.
Thank you. So yes, as you mentioned, we will be turning this over to the chair of the committee, which was Commissioner Bonzal. But really, to kind of go through like the background on this, the final report was formally accepted, I guess is the right terminology, by the commission back in June, so actually at the end of June. So there's been quite a few months in between there for us as staff to kind of review the final recommendations, to go through them. But I think it also made sense to really have this conversation with the commission and to kind of open this up and review the recommendations, and then also go forward with some sort of implementation process. So I thought it made sense for that the chair of the committee to kind of review, do a brief overview and a review of the recommendations that were made, and then also kind of that history on why some of those recommendations were made. And then after that, we can then discuss what the staff's recommendation is for implementation.
Perfect. And this is a special meeting. I'm a little bit out of sorts, but I'm wondering if maybe we should have our city clerk read the background and then roll into the report? I think that might make a little sense, so thank you. Sorry about that. We only have the one item, and it was going to be a work session. We moved it to a special meeting, so thanks for your patience, everyone.
And just a quick note, I think IT is going to try to get the slides on TV by videotaping a television. It's a little backwards, but we'll see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you.
Background, thank you, Mayor. The City Commission established the Ad Hoc Housing Committee on January 13th, 2020. The committee was charged with reviewing existing plans and programs related to housing in the city and preparing a report based on their findings. The committee completed their final report on the subject, and it was formally submitted to the City Commission at their regular meeting held on June 28th, 2021. The City Commission voted to formally accept the agreement at the meeting with the intention of studying the recommendations for approval at a later date. The recommendations centered and were divided into five major sections. Define the city role in affordable/missing-middle housing. Review and update city policies and codes. Seek partnerships. Community engagement and implementation. Approval of the recommendations of the Ad Hoc Housing Committee Final Report would be in accordance with the Housing Affordability Strategic Plan priority. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, endorse the recommendations in the Ad Hoc Housing Committee Final Report. Recommend the Planning Commission adopt the report as an appendix to the Community Master Plan and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. And I just wanted to check for format. We'll have Commissioner Bonzal do a presentation, and then I would anticipate we may have some discussion afterwards. City Attorney, when would it make the most sense to suspend rules for discussion if we needed to do so? After the presentation?
Yeah, I would probably do the presentation first.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, go ahead, Mr. Bonzal. Thank you.
Thank you all. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Great. All right. Well, I've been asked to keep this to 10 minutes as it's the time that we normally allot to our other committee presentations that would be presented to the commission on an annual basis by our other appointed committees, so I'll do my best to make that happen. So as Mayor Smith said, I was the chairperson of the Ad Hoc Housing Committee. A little bit of background, on January 13th, 2020, the City Commission unanimously voted to establish the Housing Committee with a sunset date that was eventually extended to June 30th, 2021. So our committee technically no longer exists at this point. Our mission was, quote, "to better understand the role of the city as it relates to housing affordability in the city of Marquette. This committee will be charged with reviewing existing plans and programs and preparing a report based on their findings." And we had eight voting members, including a pretty broad cross-section of the community, people from different city boards, several of whom are here tonight, representatives from the real estate industry who have special knowledge, and then everyday city residents as well. And this is just a quick list of our members. We also got additional support and background information from a wide variety of different local, statewide, and national people. City staff, especially our community development department, and also our assistant city manager, Sean Hobbins, were very helpful. But as you can see, regional partners like QPAD, Marquette County Land Bank, but also some national experts, like, for example, Dan Perelak, who actually, not only is a missing-middle housing expert, but actually coined the term "missing-middle housing" and has developed quite a bit of missing-middle housing, volunteered his time to talk to our committee at one So just a brief overview, first of all, of what does affordable housing actually mean? This is a term that gets tossed around quite a lot, but we recognize that first and foremost, we needed to actually be clear about what we're talking about here. So in August 2020, the Housing Committee unanimously approved the following definitions. First of all, we said that housing is considered affordable for a particular household if that household spends 30% or less of their gross household income on all housing expenses. And then we further defined low-income housing as housing that is affordable for households earning less than 80% of the area median income in the city of Marquette, based on that definition. And then workforce housing is similar, but in this case, it's housing that's affordable for households earning 80% to 120% of the area median income. So more of that kind of lower-middle income bracket. And these definitions are very similar to standard housing affordability definitions used by entities such as HUD, MISTDA, the Marquette Housing Commission, and just generally housing experts and people studying housing throughout the country. Missing-middle housing, this is another term that we discussed and tried to define in the report. This is actually taken directly from the report, but it's largely based on Mr. Perelak's definition of missing-middle housing that he presented to the committee. This helpful little infographic is also created by Dan Perelak of Optico's Design to kind of explain visually what missing-middle housing is. But essentially, it falls between single-family lots and urban high-density in terms of density, but it's also a range of different kinds of house-scale buildings. So buildings that are similar in scale to single-family homes, but they contain multiple units, compatible in scale and form with single-family homes, like I mentioned, and then located in a walkable neighborhood. And that's from page eight of the final report. So missing-middle housing doesn't just refer to a price range, it's also a particular type of housing. And I think we kind of would consider this to also include like smaller, single-family homes on smaller lots in Marquette's somewhat less-dense context. And these are just some visual examples of missing-middle housing that already exists in Marquette. So of course, we have the final report, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. On June 8th, the Ad Hoc Housing Committee unanimously approved the final report and referred it to the City Commission. City Commission voted on June 28th to accept it. These are some key findings. I won't go through all of them, but you can see clearly that median home sale prices and median rent have been rising in recent years, that this is related to, at least for rentals, potentially to a declining rental vacancy rate, so we can see that kind of supply and demand thing going on. A majority of Marquette city residents are actually renters, and a majority of them are cost-burdened, meaning they're spending more than 30% of their household income on housing. This is a pretty striking statistic that I definitely wanted to highlight. 8.9% of city residents ages 25 to 34 are homeowners. So again, these are people in their late 20s, early 30s, so we're not talking about students in most cases here. And that's compared to 34% of 25- to 34-year-olds nationwide. So clearly, there's probably other factors going on here, but affordability is, I'm sure, having a primary impact on that. And then we have some other statistics, if you want to review this slide on your own time, as well as are all contained in the final report. So finally, we have the recommendations of the Housing Committee. What do we actually do about all this? And this is slightly different from the way that the recommendations are grouped together in the final report. Just changed it slightly just to make it a little bit easier to digest and understand. So generally, our recommendations fall into four broad categories. So number one, actively, the city should actively facilitate affordable housing development. Number two, the city should review and update our policies. Three, we should seek partnerships beyond just, you know, this entity that is the city of Marquette. And finally, we need to do community engagement and take that seriously. So first of all, number one, actively facilitating affordable housing development. The committee feels that high-level discussion is warranted regarding the city having a stake in the development process through some form of participation. Such a role could include facilitating special financing opportunities like brownfield tiff, land, or other mechanisms. So again, we could make city-owned, developable land available specifically for affordable housing development with requests for proposals to back that up for each site, using brownfield tiff and other incentives to help get price points down to affordable levels. And of course, ARPA, the regulations for ARPA funds came out slightly after the final report was released, but they are a potential funding mechanism for affordable housing as well. Second, reviewing and updating city policies. This is the largest category of recommendations in the final report, and you know, when we're talking about zoning and permitting, but also updating city plans and data sources, and also just a kind of a catch-all of other city policies and programs. And you can find this on pages 21 through 23 of the final report. Of course, we have zoning and permitting reforms, recommendations like allowing accessory dwelling units and duplexes as permitted uses in all residential zoning districts, and making tweaks to our zoning code to allow them to actually be built. So for example, there are many lots in the city where theoretically you can build a duplex, but lot-dimensional requirements just barely prevent you from actually doing that. Or you might want to build an ADU on top of your garage, but you would currently be prevented from doing so by the current ADU height limit. So maybe we need to make a tweak there, just as a couple of examples. There are many other zoning-related recommendations in here, but I won't belabor that point just in the interest of time. And of course, updating city plans and data sources, a couple highlights would of course be what we're going to be voting on tonight, adopting this final report as an appendix to the Community Master Plan, but also focusing on housing affordability in future strategic plans and the upcoming Community Master Plan, conducting a housing quality survey, making sure that our upcoming tourism plan is talking about short-term rentals and their impacts. And then sort of again, a catch-all of other city policies and programs. One that I want to highlight is restarting the Marquette Senior Center's Home Injury Control Program, which provides microgrants to seniors with disabilities to allow them to age in place in their current homes. This program was discontinued a little while ago, but we were informed that the Senior Center is looking at restarting it. Third, seeking partnerships. So we can't do this alone. It's been noted many times, this is a regional issue. It's also a very complex issue. The city government is not capable on our own of solving this problem of housing affordability and some of the other housing issues we have in the community. So we need to do things like join the Marquette County Intergovernmental Housing Task Force to continue these discussions at a regional level, which we've already done, but also engage housing developers and service providers like Room at the Inn or Superior Housing Solutions or Habitat for Humanity, who are actually both a service provider and a developer, potentially. City entities need to be involved in this. We need to be working together within our own house as well, with the DDA, the Housing Commission, the BLP, who own a lot of developable land that isn't currently being used for power generation or for recreation or other purposes. And of course, working with the Brownfield Authority. NMU, especially with the news today about the old hospital property, right? I mean, this is an entity we need to be working with, but also just because the student population, I mean, these are thousands of people living in the city of Marquette. Most of them live off-campus, and most of them are renters. So not only do they have a major impact on the city's housing market, but they also have housing needs that we need to be concerned about as well. And then of course, having partnerships with regional and statewide entities like the County Land Bank or MISTDA, the MEDC. And there's some interesting information in the final report about this concept of a community land trust as well, which I don't have time to go into in more detail, but it's essentially a way to preserve long-term housing affordability for the community. And then finally, community engagement. This is critical. The committee recommends the City Commission direct the city manager to facilitate a public education and input process regarding the above recommendations. So educating folks about some of the information, such as that that is contained in this report, but also soliciting public feedback and input about what the housing needs that they see in the community are and how this might impact them and their families. And other partners might be able to help us with this. I know LSCP and QPAD have both expressed some interest in that. And we also recommended that that public engagement and community input process begin as soon as possible after the approval of the final report, and should also be incorporated holistically into our upcoming Community Master Plan public engagement process. That is all that I have tonight.
Well, Commissioner Bonzal, thank you very much for the thorough presentation, for all your work, you know, leading this committee. And I wanted to take time to thank all of the committee members for their time. We've got some of those folks right here in the audience, and I really do appreciate all the work you've done to get us to this point. I think at this point, it may be prudent to ask if anyone would like to suspend the rules for maybe some discussion amongst the commission? rules for maybe some discussion amongst the commission? And I'm sure Commissioner Bonzel will be glad to answer questions if warranted, or city staff, whatever might be appropriate. Do we have a motion, commissioners? Commissioner Hanley?
I motion that we suspend the rules for discussion.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. Commissioner Hanley, did you want to start us off, since you made the motion? No? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Sure. One of the things that struck me with the report was that there was a page of numbers that related to how low-income is in Marquette for certain age groups, and then, of course, whether it would be in another city, let's say, comparison, state averages. Isn't that a reflection of being a university town with all the northern students? And if that's true, then we're really dealing with skewed numbers, because we expect a northern student to be in the city for four years, move on, get a job, and continue. And if we're using their baseline data while they're in the city of Marquette as a student, they're obviously going to be at the low end of the economic spectrum. Correct? So if they are, why are we allowing that to skew what might be a wider system within the city in terms of where are we really with affordable housing and what is our real population base of citizens? People who are here beyond four years and expect to live their lives here. So I question that data. I don't think it's really applicable for what we're using it for, yet would have been useful to have seen that data compared against a town of our size that is not a university town, that doesn't have the influx of students that come and go. Because after all, the city is not responsible necessarily to provide a given set of affordable housing for every student that goes to Northern. And that's really what the implication is coming out of that particular slide.
Interesting questions. I don't know that there's an answer to any of those, right? Something to think about, for sure. I am thinking maybe we'll go reverse alphabetical down the line and then see if others have questions, unless someone wanted to respond to Commissioner Stonehouse from staff. I don't think we have an answer to that one, really. You, I didn't notice, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bonzel, do you have something to say on that?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that that's, it's not an entirely unfair point, Commissioner Stonehouse, but I think, number one, we need to keep in mind that I don't believe that all NMU students, first of all, are residents of the city of Marquette, or even if they live in the city of Marquette while they're at school, that they're counted as city residents for the purposes of the census. So, but I think that there is a valid point there, but my counterargument to that would be, and the reason that is, number one, there's no practical way to separate students out from the general population in the data sets that we have. And this is how median household income is measured throughout the country, including in every college town, every county that contains college towns. So we're not doing anything differently than other communities would do. Also, I mean, northern students are residents of our community. Many of them are from Marquette. I have many, many friends who attend NMU, who grew up here, born and raised here, and would like to continue living here after college. So I think that we shouldn't dismiss them out of hand merely because they're students. And I think there's also a lot of other evidence in the report beyond the data specifically about median household income and our student population that points to a larger problem that isn't just being influenced by students. For example, the statistics about how it's about more than four times, people ages 25 to 34 are more than four times less likely to be homeowners in Marquette than in the nation as a whole. I think that it does speak to a larger problem. So I think it's not an entirely invalid point. I think it's a good thing to bring up. We need to acknowledge that reality. We have a large student population. But at the end of the day, I mean, this is how HUD and MISTDA calculate what is considered affordable or a fair market rent, or, you know, they use AMI to determine eligibility for low-income housing in our community. So if they're using those numbers, I guess I don't see why we wouldn't use them either.
I certainly disagree with your premise. I think we need to be far more accurate in how we measure economic data and how we use it, and how we use it when we look for decision basis as we are with this particular documented program. We understand that northern students are residents of our community for any time. They're here, and that's good, and we embrace them. And they may someday be citizens of our community if they invest within the community and choose to stay. But to try and balance that economic data of a poor student, which arguably we were all students, we were all relatively poor for a period of time until we graduated, went on, and earned a living. And that's data that needs to be captured. We need to understand it far better than what this report has, or you have briefed on, as a decision base. I think that's really very important. I would also suggest that we need to look and define, what is success? In other words, if we want to have affordable housing, we want to promulgate it in its various forms, how do we know when we have been successful? Do we need to have 1,000 additional units? Do we need to have 500? Do we need to have 2,000? Do we need to have 10? What is it? And I saw nothing in the report that defined success, because we clearly should not be trying to posture ourselves to provide affordable housing to everybody that walks in the street and says, "I want affordable housing." Because we know that if we have it, they will come, regardless of whether or not they are arguably legitimate citizens in Marquette or within our community. So I do feel that if we're going to accept this report and it's, or try and implement it, we need to have a measure of what success will be. And again, nothing in the report that I saw was attacking that vistage. I think we need to have.
Anything else from Commissioner Stonehouse before we continue down the line?
That's all. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hill?
If I may, I have some suggestions on how to address some of the things that Commissioner Stonehouse has raised. I agree that we need to have a little bit more of a data, not just a little, but we need to have a more data-focused approach to help us, I think, reach the idea of what success looks like. And I'm going to say the word that I think hasn't been said yet is, what if Marquette gets bigger? What if we do have more than 20,000 people? The Upper Peninsula's population has stayed at 300,000 for 100 years, even as the rest of the country has grown. That population has moved around. A lot of it used to be in the Keweenaw, and of course, now Keweenaw is one of the smallest regions of all of Michigan. So I think what we're, part of what we're struggling with is here, there are more people who want to live here than have lived here in the past. I'm just going to say it. And I think that the pressures that we're feeling are part of that. And so the question then becomes, how are we going to build more housing? And even more important, where are we going to put it? I have been asking, since this process began, for maps that show where can a house, where can people live in Marquette? We have zoning maps that are all these different colors that show the zoning, all the zoning in their fine degrees. What I'm asking for is a map that shows where you can live, just where you can live and where you can't live, and where the parks are. That kind of basic-level information will give us a lot of understanding of what's possible now, and then where would we possibly put in more housing in the future? And so I think this process of identifying opportunities is really what I see this report as doing, and defining the fact that, yes, while there's not a lot of population data, there's certainly a lot of price data, right? So we need to bring those two things together. And I'm not saying that we don't approve the report, but I think as we think about how we want to go forward, there's some critical baseline information that has not yet been developed. You can go on censusreporter.gov right now and see the age breakdown of the population of Marquette, and then you can just back out the population of NMU, and you'll know how many students there are. I mean, I, that part is, you can give yourself a rest estimate. That part's not challenging. So I think, I just want to, so in addressing your comments, and I do think that it's going to be critical to get public input on what success is, and how much, you know, do we want to grow? Because the other thing that I see, this is the first time in my life I've ever lived in a community that had so many snowbirds in it. I lived in places that had people who lived year-round. I didn't live in a place where people only lived six months a year. That was just, wasn't something I knew. And so that's another part of, a unique part of the Upper Peninsula is that we have seasonal residents, no matter what age they are, and whether they're students, you could even call a student a seasonal person. So I think we can take this as a first step in starting towards understanding what the future of Marquette's going to look like and where people are going to live, and that there are types of housing that, given the different age ranges of the people who want to live here, that we need. I think the report has done a good job of identifying those things.
Portem Mayor.
Thank you. I do want to take a brief moment here to thank Commissioner Bonzel and the rest of the committee members who are here or may not be here tonight for all the work they did on this. I believe, given that timeline in the presentation, it looked like about a year and a half worth of work went into that. So thank you. I just kind of want to make one point or thought process here, that it might be useful, assuming that we do approve this tonight, which I'm hoping we do, that we consider looking at a joint work session with the Planning Commission to work out some of the details that Commissioner Hill was referring to, and kind of iron out some more concreteness to it, and determining where we can put some more housing, or what city policies maybe we need to adjust or change, I think would be a valid way to approach this, instead of just trying to figure it out as we go. And it would give all of us an opportunity to have a public forum to do it with the Planning Commission, and the public can still be engaged for that process. And I think there definitely needs to be more public input involvement beyond that as well. But I think that would be a great next step following this. For now, that's the only comment I have, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hanley? Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you. I first want to acknowledge the committee members and express appreciation for all the input and all the number of volunteer hours that they put into this report. And this is not a committee of all like-minded people, but a group with very diverse expertise. And they needed to study and understand one another, and so, well done, Commissioner Bonzel, in managing that group of people on this report. You know, in our packet, we're asked to approve a resolution, and I think I can be in support of this resolution with the recognition that not all of the recommendations can or should be implemented in the whole. Ms. Nalt has come here as one of, one voice of many others that I've heard in the community about, please don't mess with the look and feel of Marquette. And so I want to respect that. But each of these recommendations needs further study by an appropriate committee or party, and input from the public has already been suggested. You know, I guess, in other words, I approve the resolution at a high level with the understanding that some of the work has already been accomplished. And since June, we have even accomplished some of the things that have, some of the recommendations that are here, and the understanding that the recommendations will be further vetted. One of the report's unsettling things for me was just the point that Commissioner Stonehouse brought up, and that is, we don't have a sense of where we're going with this. I've noted that some communities in Michigan have been able to determine housing goals. And let me give you a couple of examples. Grand Rapids did a needs assessment that resulted in a goal of 5,340 additional rental units by 2025, and a need for more than 3,548 additional homes for sale. Networks Northwest and Housing North identified the need for 11,000 new rental units with a standard rent of $800 per month or less. They also estimated a need for 4,600 homes, a majority under 200,000. So those are very specific targets, which we don't have. I look at the recommendations on this report as actions that the Ad Hoc Committee would like to see happen. And actions, to me, need to be focused toward a goal. And without any goals or objectives as specific as what I just mentioned, we don't know how to judge our success. But we need to ask the question, what specifically are we wanting to accomplish? And how will we know when our work is complete, or when success has been realized? Without those specific objectives and metrics, it's a little bit like throwing darts at a wall without a target. We won't know our score, and it's very likely that our efforts will just kind of fade into the background after a few years and not ever be recognized. So as we work with even the county's housing committee, perhaps that's where we need to be, not only for the county, but even more specifically for Marquette. What are we really trying to accomplish? And I will end with that.
My microphone. Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And certainly, you know, I appreciate all of the comments that people have made. I think that you're all correct. You know, we can have disagreements on specific recommendations in the report, but I think that generally, we all share the goal, and I hope we all share the sense of urgency to address this issue. Housing affordability is something that has personally affected me and my family, and I'm not alone, or even the minority in that, in the city of Marquette. And so this is something that we need to take seriously. I mean, I can tell you that when I was talking to people, when I was running for the City Commission initially, this is one of the top two or three things that people would mention. So it is certainly a salient issue in the community, has been for some time. We had a public comment that noted that even 10 or 11 years ago, it was surprising to that gentleman that spoke how much more expensive things had become in the community, and things have changed a lot even since then. So this is an urgent issue. I think that tonight is an important first step. And I think that it's also important to recognize, like, the limits of what we're being asked to do tonight, right? Tonight, we are essentially being asked to accept this report and, you know, empower city staff and our city committees to start following up on and studying these different recommendations. We're also incorporating it into our current master plan. That's all great, and it's all critically important, but it's really just the very early stages of what is going to need to be a concerted, multi-year, and really continuous effort to make sure that our community can remain an affordable place to live for people of all incomes. And I think that it's also important to recognize the limits of what the Ad Hoc Housing Committee was tasked with doing, and what we were capable of doing. You know, I think that the point about, you know, the need for more specific data or more specific metrics for success is absolutely on point, but it's not an objective that the Ad Hoc Housing Committee could have realistically met. Because, you know, the examples, for instance, I have read the housing needs assessment for Grand Rapids. We actually heard from someone who was pretty intimately involved in that process, in the Housing Next Initiative in Grand Rapids, which has been very successful, at least in the early stages. And in the Housing North report, you know, Sarah Lucas, the current CEO, LCP, was very involved in that. We're very lucky to have her in our community, and hopefully she can help with some of that stuff. But those are both, you know, professional housing needs assessments conducted by people who do this sort of thing for a living. And, you know, the Ad Hoc Housing Committee was an all-volunteer committee. And it's, this issue is also a lot more complex than I think we tend to acknowledge, right? So like, for instance, the question of student housing, you might be able to find how many students attend NMU, but it's hard to find data on how many of those students, and you can even find out how many of them live off-campus versus on-campus. But there's no census data or data that NMU tracks that tracks where those students actually live. And I can tell you, like, more and more, at least anecdotally, students are leaving the city of Marquette because they can't find affordable rental housing. So, you know, it's a very complex issue that requires people who are uniquely qualified and spend, you know, their job is to figure these sort of things out. And I think that would be a great next step for us to include in this community ma- And I think that would be a great next step for us to include in this community master planning process. And I think it would be a great thing for us to tackle, but really, it's not something that our city staff had the capacity to do in-house. It's not something that our committee had the capacity to do to the level of detail that we really would like to see. And so that's why, rather than doing a not very good job of it, we decided to strategically not, you know, just kind of actually sort of throw a dart at the board and say, oh, well, we expect it's probably we need X number of units. I think that that's a really important question to answer, but that's why we didn't answer in this report. And I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Mayor that a joint work session with the Planning Commission would be helpful. I'm looking forward to continued conversations about this, including at our meeting next week. And I am very grateful to all of you for providing a lot of helpful feedback throughout this lengthy process. And I hope that this will be a catalyst for, you know, the kind of action, timely action and impactful action that we need on this issue in the coming months and years.
Well, I just have a couple of comments. So this issue has been important to me for several years. I served in the Housing Commission before. I served in the City Commission for a couple of years. And I was very interested in getting this committee started in 2017 and in 2018. And I'm so glad to see that the committee was able to be formed, take some action. And I know it's slow. It feels slow, but it just feels really good to see it up for a vote finally tonight. It's a really complex and a difficult problem to tackle, but I think these are some really good steps in the right direction. So I wanted to thank again the ad hoc committee. Really appreciate all your hours, your conversations, your expertise in your different subject areas. Also wanted to thank city staff, especially Dennis Stackwitz and Sean Hovens for your hours and hours of work on this critical topic for the city of Marquette. Thank you. You know, we actually do have a joint work session with the Planning Commission potentially in the works for January. And this is a topic I think that we should talk about with them, among some other topics as well related to land development code and maybe some zoning and that type of items. Thank you, Pro Tem Mayor, for bringing that up. And then, Commissioner Davis, I really liked the stats that you mentioned. I would really like to see that. I don't know where that fits in, but I wrote down in really big letters, Housing Needs Assessment. So I think that's something we certainly can look forward to, either with the master planning process or through our partnership with the county and other municipal functions or groups, where we're all, we're probably all needing that kind of data. And I'm assuming that it costs money, but I think it would be dollars well spent. And maybe there's some grant money out there that could help us with that. So I feel like we've had a lot of really good conversation on this topic. I know we may not all see eye to eye, but I think, at the end of the day, we all want people to be able to afford to live here. And we want, at least, at least I want to be able to see, you know, our police officers, our firefighters, our teachers, our nurses, to be able to afford to buy a house or rent a house in Marquette, live and work here. So I think this report and the hopeful adoption of it is a good step in that direction. So that's where I'm at. I'm wondering if we need any more discussion before we go and take a vote. Commissioner Davis?
You know, you mentioned this is a slow process, that it is. And I've heard Commissioner Stonehouse before talk about how government is slow on purpose. And it feels really slow, but I know that the city has been doing a lot of work on this since June and before June. And I'm wondering, and I guess I have to ask our city manager, if it's, if it's an appropriate time to talk about some of the things that have been done within the Planning Commission or being planned with city staff for the newer future in adding additional affordable housing?
I will say that, you know, this topic amongst some of the other housing future developments or potential developments that are coming forward before the commission soon, all are coming at a very interesting time, are all coming to head right now. We were looking at scheduling several work sessions, special meetings, and agenda items for quite some time, and we're trying to get them all filled, fit in, and also fit in in the appropriate timeframe. So yes, we do have, I would say, about two or three different developments that are coming forward, all related to housing, and all are talking about certain aspects of housing, but also certain aspects of that attainable housing. So while I, we can mention those certainly, but I really think that the focus is more of the broader aspect of that. But, like I said, the timing is coming forward. So we did, we were in conversations with a potential developer, and there was some kind of, some discussions about trying to bring these before the commission sooner. And we said that we feel it was more appropriate to talk about this report and talk about implementing this or what our next steps are on this, before we started talking about those, so that we do have a little bit of guidance and are looking at some of these specific recommendations and how they can fit in now, even before any of these changes or recommendations come forward or are official. So, you know, that's up to you, if you, you know, Mayor, if you'd like me to elaborate on some of these items coming forward, because they do...
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be better to stick with the broad, but I will say we've got a couple coming up in our meeting next Monday, so stay tuned for that agenda, which will be released a later date tomorrow.
Yes, and just to talk about, if you don't mind, the tools that we're talking about with Brownfield, with partnerships, with regional approaches, and then also with just plain investment from the city side of things in order to create more housing and to create the ability to have attainable housing. So those are all coming up. There are about, what, two or three agenda items that are coming forward that do relate to this, all happening next Monday, so before even the end of the year. So yes, there are, these conversations happen nearly daily with our staff related to housing.
And in addition, there's a new intergovernmental task force at the county level, which is one of the recommendations, and then it came to fruition before we could even get to approving the report. And then, I'm thinking of one other thing. I know LSCP has been working, and CUBET have been working on some housing initiatives as well, so we talk about partnerships. I mean, it's happening. Commissioner Bonzel?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight also that the, I think it was in 2015, the land development code was like overhauled, right? And that significant overhaul of the land development code did do a really good job of starting to move us more in this direction of having this more like medium-density housing, this missing middle housing. I mean, it's always a continuous process, is what I say, right? Like, we may, even if we implemented all of the proposed recommendations in the report, I'm sure we would look back five or 10 years from now and think, oh gee, we missed some things, or we need to tweak some things. But that was a great early first step that happened back in 2015. And I think we were actually sort of on the cutting edge in a lot of ways at that, because at that time, these nationwide conversations about the impact of zoning policy on affordability were really just starting to become more mainstream.
Good point. And I know, Commissioner Hill, you're a hand raised. It's going to take some getting used to. I think that was in 2018 that we did the LDC? Does that sound right? I'm looking around. Dennis?
It's 2018, I think.
2015, community master plan, yeah.
2018.
Thank you. I just was getting mixed up on my dates there.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I got mixed up on the dates as well. Yeah, it was 2018, 2015 was the CMP.
It was updated in 2018, the master plan was, and then the LDC was done just after that.
Thank you. Just wanted to confirm from my own memory, because I remember approving it, and I wasn't on here in 2015, so the math wasn't adding up. Commissioner Hill, sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you, city manager, for teeing up that there's actually a lot coming our way with housing. And if you don't mind, we had to wait for the election, basically, to have part of this conversation in order to not get ahead of ourselves. So just to be clear, that a lot of this is also coming now because there was an election in November, and at the first meeting in November, all we do is install our leadership. So that was also a piece of what, how the timing of this all came about. I also, I just, I want to have some maps. Because they're really critical tools to understand what is happening in our community, and there can be very valuable ways for people to come to common ground about what's happening. And I don't, we have a GIS, ArcGIS license for the city, correct?
I would think so.
Yeah, so I, this is a visual understanding of our community that needs to be brought forward. The text is nice, and the ideas are nice, and the numbers are nice. We need the visuals. Are we going to have visuals on Monday?
I mean, that would be something we can certainly work on. The request really, the request was very specific at this point, which is beyond what our current maps hold or even our interactive maps for our land development code hold. So certainly, that's something we can work on.
And I actually asked for that over a week ago, and I asked for it when this housing process got started. So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you're gonna, until, the value that they add is really important. And so, thank you, and I did have to ask for them now. This is now the fourth time. So for all you visual folks out there, I'm trying. And because it's important to see what's next to each other, it's important to see where the spaces are, it's important to understand what the density is. That's all what these maps can do for us. Because here's the other thing that I'm concerned about, is, and I think, and certainly in my knocking doors and hearing things from the community, and now my two elections, is that folks are very concerned that the private market is driving this, and what about the input of the residents? And what the community wants to have happen? And where do we want to have housing? You talk to anybody, and within 10 minutes, as soon as you tell them you're running for office, and you're going to hear, I don't want to be Traverse City, right? You're going to hear that, guaranteed. That's because folks are very worried about the development that's happening, not on the waterfront, but near the waterfront, over and over and over again, right? I'm going to also put that out on the table. That's part of what drove this. People are really worried about that. We haven't, I'm gonna, I'm giving you that, I'm speaking for all those people I talked to on the doors who said, don't make us, why is it always on the waterfront? There are developments coming that are not going to be on the waterfront. But in looking at the maps, we can say, well, do we want them here? Do we want them there? Do we want them near the schools? Do we want them near transportation corridors? Do we, you know, there's near, where work is, you know, with the new hospital, there's now a new work center. And do we want to have housing more near the hospital so that people have a place to live near the hospital? And I'm concerned that right now, what we're doing is, well, here's a vacant piece of land, let's put housing there. Well, are those people, you know, that, I think that's putting the cart before the horse a little bit. It does mean that we're getting more housing, but it doesn't mean that we've done it in a way that's thoughtful for how the community is coherent and we all live together. And so that's what I'm hoping we can, as we go through the master plan process, we can begin to have more of a conversation about how that looks and how we are understanding that the city is going to grow and change. Because I think, and last point, what's really interesting, of course, is that in the last 50 years, what was industrial has become high-end housing. And that change, in a generation and a half, was an intentional change. So what intentional change do we want to have going to 2050? Where are we going to grow? Where are folks going to live going forward to 2050?
Any other commissioners before we take a vote? Commissioner Bonzel? Oh, sorry, I'll do, Commissioner Stonehouse next.
Do you want me to go first?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so, yeah, thank you, Commissioner Hill. And I just wanted to point out that I completely agree with you. I think most of the people on the Housing Committee agree that we need to, would agree that we need to have a thoughtful, you know, way that we go about this. That's why in the final report, we are recommending that we include this community engagement process, not just as a standalone thing, but in our upcoming CMP process. And that that, for, that feedback that we get forms the basis for requests for proposals that we could put out for developable city-owned properties or other properties in the city. For example, maybe working with the foundation in the old hospital, I mean, who knows, right? But putting out requests for proposals that specifically are soliciting affordable housing development, but like, specific kinds of housing development that people in the community and surrounding neighborhoods, you know, would find to be palatable and that they could support. So that is built into the final report, and I really do hope that we go ahead and implement that recommendation moving forward. The last thing I just wanted to do is just, I did, and I apologize for prolonging this, but I did promise a constituent, or I guess she's not a constituent, but someone who emailed me and asked me to share a message with the commission, who was not able to be here tonight. And I think that she was perhaps confused in how to contact the commission. Is it okay if I just read that briefly?
Sure.
Thank you. So this is from Anna Mattson, who lives in Nagani, but I believe he used to live in Marquette. So she contacted me back in February and said, within the next six to eight years, I'll be looking at all of my options for housing. I am a widow, retired, senior citizen, and own my own home in Nagani. I live in a location referred to as Beverly Hills, but neither I nor any of my neighbors have found oil in our backyards. I'll be looking at all options, yet staying in this general area. I hope that by that time, there are some middle-income properties in Marquette that will meet my needs. My list includes one level, two bedrooms, one bath, open concept, garage or carport, laundry facilities, some outdoor space, and close to local amenities such as groceries, shopping, and mixed commercial options. So far, the only development that I have found that comes close to my wish list is a development located directly behind the Red Lobster and Culver's restaurants. If my sixth-grade granddaughter were a senior, I would have moved there last summer. These units were built by a local developer, and they have never been vacant for very long. I have a friend who is very much like myself and currently lives there. I also have numerous friends and relatives in similar situations as me, and they have also voiced the same wishes. I understand that your interest and obligations in looking forward are to the residents of the city of Marquette, but I am encouraged that you've shown the ability to think beyond the boundaries of the city limits. I think it has been proven that we work better as a whole than as individuals. Thank you for hearing that. I just wanted to make sure I shared Ms. Mattson's comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonzel. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yeah, interesting, Commissioner Bonzel. I think the fellow's talking about Mill Creek, which is in Marquette Township.
No?
Not, not the city. A few things, I certainly support Commissioner Hill in her effort to look forward to the city and where people will be going and where we can put them and how we can accommodate a growing population. I think whether or not that actually happens, we need to be prepared for it, and now's a good time to do it, and it certainly should be part of this report. A concern with the report, however, is we have about four pages of recommendations as part of this document, with the briefing the day we got, of course, was much truncated and appreciated. But some of them, I think, really deserve discussion within the commission prior to saying, this is something we want to do. And we have not had an opportunity to look at some of those and question them deeply to understand what the real implication of it may be. So we were accepting recommendations that may not make sense. I mean, we need to give it that due diligence to make sure that this is something that the commission politically wants to do. Do we, as for example, want to establish a land bank in the city? I don't know we do. That's got some ups and it's got some pluses and some minuses, but it's part of this report. So I find it something that really is not supportable without being closely examined. I remain deeply concerned with having bad data in the report, particularly as it relates to the AMI and the price structure and living accommodations within the city of Marquette. The reason that's so important, bad data lives forever. Once you publish something that's wrong and you make it as part of a report, it never goes away. So even though you may be able later to fix it theoretically, because now you have the good data, the bad data always is there. It's like the internet. Whatever you post is going to be there somewhere. So I will not be voting for this report because until the data is right or scrubbed out or eliminated, I don't think it should be part of a document that this commission formally agrees to. And lastly, to parrot, I think one of the comments made by one of our speakers, you know, Marquette is a highly desirable community. Marquette has won awards from up and down and left and right for a whole bunch of different things, but basically, quality of life and living here would be a good summation for that. And as we know, many reasons why that's, that those are well-deserved. But it also means, on the flip side, that everybody wants to live here. They may not be able to afford to live here. Maybe they don't have the school training, they don't have the ability to earn the income necessary, to have whatever housing level they want to be at, but they want to be here. We have all the bright and shiny things. So when you compare the outside of the city limits and perhaps other places in the state of Michigan, people want to be here. And that really drives, in large respect, the, quote, "affordable housing market," because they're looking for a place to live. And as we wish to change Marquette and adapt it, we have to be very careful that we don't break it, that we don't do things that take away all the good that we've done because of a mythical drive for additional housing. of a mythical drive for additional housing. And again, we also have to have a target. We may not have an absolute target of what success is, but we have to have a working target. We have to have something that we can say, "We are being successful, we're not being successful, we're going the wrong way, we're going the right way." Thank you for your time.
Mr. Davis?
Commissioner Stonehouse, I, I agree with you that I'm not, I too am not 100% comfortable with the recommendations that are in the report. What makes me feel okay about it is the statement that just before, I'm gonna take this up, "It should be noted that each of these recommendations are a potential project within themselves that would require further review and dissection by the appropriate board, committee, commission, administrative department, as well as robust community input." That gave me a little bit more comfort level than I would otherwise feel about all of these, because I, each, each one of these recommend, that's why I said I would like, I approve it at a high level. The specifics of the recommendations feel too unsettled for me because they have not been truly studied and vetted. So with that, I agree with you, but the statement ahead of it makes it a little bit more okay for me. And I don't want to ignore Mr. Thompson's comments about the cost of just putting things together, and that's something that we need to look at. I think it's in these recommendations, but I have to, would have to find it. So there's just, those recommendations just need a lot more study and discussion.
I would agree, and that was gonna be my comment, is that if we were to approve the report, the next step is that it would go before the Planning Commission and then be adopted, hopefully maybe into the master plan. And then from there, I think city staff kind of picks away at projects that they can get, you know, what can we do this year? What can we do next year? What are the different goals that fit within our strategic planning goals? That's how I saw that process going. So I did not see it as an immediate adoption of every recommendation. Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your comments. I, I guess, I would just, I would say that I, certainly, that, the line that you referenced, Commissioner Davis, was included in the report very intentionally. We recognize that as our committee, we try to be representative of the different committees and boards that relate to housing within the city of Marquette, but also the broader community. This is why we brought in people with special knowledge about real estate and housing, why we brought in, you know, just everyday city residents to our committee. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's a group of eight people. We don't have all the answers, we don't have all the solutions, we can't foresee all potential problems. And so I think that further study is warranted. However, I mean, I would note that, you know, this report was approved on June 8th and was forwarded to the City Commission shortly thereafter. And I understand why we had a delay in having this discussion until now, until after, we were hiring a city manager, then we had, you know, some serious budgetary issues to contend with, then we had an election, so I understand that. But I also think that it's, first of all, I, there's not bad data in the report. Does the report have limitations? Certainly. But there is not bad data in the report. And I mean, and frankly, I mean, I think, you know, we, as the Housing Committee, worked very hard on this. There were hundreds and hundreds of volunteer hours put into this, many, many people contributed to this report. So I think that, you know, I think that saying that we, we don't know, or we haven't had an opportunity to know what's in the report, would not be accurate. And I also don't think it's accurate to say that there's bad data in the report, or that these recommendations are going to break Marquette or have a negative impact on the community. I mean, I suppose I would point to the land development code revisions, which were quite significant, and the community hasn't gone to heck since 2018 or 2019 when those were approved, right? So, I mean, I, I think that we need to have like a more, a more nuanced discussion about this moving forward, but I think while acknowledging the limitations of the report, I hope that we really do, you know, take and value the work that the committee has done, and that we, and that this doesn't get put on a shelf, that this is, certainly, we need to have more discussions, but that those discussions need to start happening, and then we need to keep the ball moving forward, and that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. So, that's, that's all that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonzel. I think we've had enough discussion. I'm gonna go ahead and call a vote. This is a roll call vote. City Clerk, if you could please help us conducting that, I would appreciate it.
Did we have a motion?
I don't have a motion. Sorry. Do we have a motion to, I guess there's a recommendation listed here, but I guess whoever would like to make a motion? I'm looking. Commissioner Hill, sorry, I couldn't see your hand.
Yeah, thank you. I move that we, that the, I move that the City Commission endorse the recommendations in the Ad Hoc Housing Committee final report and recommend the Planning Commission to adopt the report as an appendix to the community master plan and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
And we have a second on that motion. Mr. Bonzel?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Hill, any discussion?
I think we've had, thank you for the opportunities today, and thank you to the committee for making all of this happen over the time and taking it on during COVID, of course, during a very difficult time. Thank you very much, and I think this is just the first step.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners? Okay, now we will take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes six to one. Okay, that brings us to our second public comment session of the evening. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address.
My name is Paul Schumacher, and I forgot the first time. It was, I just moved from 406 East Park. I'm now at 322 Fortress in Gwin. I was also a member of the Marquette Housing Commission and had to resign due to the fact of moving out of town. I gotta get this up here. So I was also on the, on the board of Affordable Housing Solutions of the Upper Peninsula, which is part of the Marquette Housing Commission. In regards to Mr. Stonehouse's comments about the data, you can go anywhere online, and you can go to citidata.com, somebody else mentioned another site, where you can find out accurate data. None of the data is by people who don't file taxes in this town. So all the data that's in there is only people who file taxes, who work here, live here year-round, not somebody coming and going as a student. And the success will come once all this work is done. This is the initial study. So all the work needs to be done, that data does need to be compiled. This report wasn't meant to be an end-all data source. It was meant to be a beginning. It was meant to be a, just an overview of, somewhere to start. And this is gonna be a long time, because the city has gone, I think, in the wrong direction. And a lot of people are gonna be offended by that, I don't care. But when you're building big box things out here, you want to turn the Savings Bank building into a hotel, you want to build more condominiums, you built all the birdhouses, you built all the condos out here, you want to build multimillion-dollar condos, all this money is to developers from out of the area. Does anybody get what that means? All the money going into those structures leave the area. Not one dime comes here. They don't hire people from Marquette anymore to work on these, because there isn't anybody to work. And so, if you're gonna have all these condos, where are the families gonna move in? Where are their children gonna live? The school system has dropped over 50% in the last 20 years, if I'm not mistaken. The school system is dropping in students attending the schools. If we don't build houses for people, not condos for temporary residents like elderly people who come and go, the snowbirds, if you build houses for families that have children, you're gonna have a community. Otherwise, this is gonna be a very sterile community of just college students, retirees, and wealthy people that like to drink beers and don't get married and don't have children. So that's a big problem with Marquette that I've seen. I came here in 1971, I'm still here now. I know what the changes have gone through all these years, and I've seen these things happen, and I can see in Marquette that if you don't stop giving away land to developers, there's never gonna be families in this town. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Stephanie Jones, 606 North Sixth, and I am a member of the committee, so I appreciate your appreciation of our hours, and there were many hours. And we knew on our committee level what our limitations were. But I do want to acknowledge one thing that was not in your discussion. We knew from the very beginning that the city does not create housing. The city may facilitate housing, but the city is not a developer, and the city will never be a developer. The city can partner with developers, and if they can be local developers, that's great. But one thing that was mentioned in public comment was mentioned quite often by the developers in our committee, and that is the extremely high cost to development, which does limit the number of developers that can come in and develop. And a lot of the recommendations that we recommended were able to be implemented before our report was even given to you in June. So I do want to say, we have maps, we looked at these maps all throughout our process, and we can't say we're gonna put a development here, because maybe that's privately owned. And we can't say the Board of Light and Power should give us this land, because this would be perfect for development, because we don't own it. But maybe that can be incentivized by the city to trade some land and do some other things. But the city doesn't own a ton of land to be used for development, and we understand that. But how can we incentivize it to make it good for that missing middle? The other thing is, that housing assessment, that's already in your packet. That's in the presentation that we gave you back in June. That is, I believe it's in the appendix section. I also want to say, this is critical. I know government moves slow. Fred has told me that numerous times, and I understand it. But since we started on this committee, I have had multiple buyers not take jobs in Marquette because they could not move their families here. So they didn't take jobs. So the cost of not moving quickly is that people won't move here with their families and won't take their jobs, and companies won't be able to grow. So there is a cost to not being able to do these implementations in a manner, and not do those developments in a manner that Marquette needs. Growth is not necessarily the worst thing, and everyone hates the big condos, but if you look at who lives in a whole lot of those condos, they're Marquette grandparents, and they gave up their house on Ridge Street, and they moved into the condos, and that allowed that house to get purchased by someone locally, who maybe gave up their house on Altamont, for someone else to move in. And it's the domino theory, and it does happen all the time. Thank you.
Sarah Metelfelt, 505 Albert Street. I just wanted to, again, thank everybody on the commission, I guess a lot of folks in the, in the audience are part of that, the hard work that went into it. I thought it was a really great study. I learned a lot, not being a housing expert. I thought this was a really great document that helped me get my head around a lot of the challenges that we're gonna face, and I look forward to the joint commission in January with the Planning Commission. So I just wanted to thank you very much for your time and approving this.
Anyone else for public comment?
Dave Thompson, 3152 Island Beach Boulevard, or Road, I guess it is now. I think this, the, the affordable housing needs to be kept in context of the overall economic direction in the master plans that the city have. As you look at the city of Marquette, one of the things that brought us back here, again, family, but we were tired of living in towns that had become stratified, between high-income and then low-income people with very little middle class. We have always strived to develop and grow middle-class companies. We have developed numerous companies and left them at different parts of the country. And, you know, growing the middle class is very difficult. It means opening up job opportunities. You know, we have, you know, I've seen all sorts of stuff on, both positive and negative, on, you know, the Rocket Program. Well, the Rocket Program has positives and negatives. It can bring in some really high-dollar technical jobs, and it can support an awful lot of middle-income jobs, generates an awful lot of demand for restaurants. It has negatives. I'm not gonna state all of the different negatives that I've heard, but it does have negatives. So discussion about what the city wants to do to attract, from an economic perspective, the job base that's going to drive a middle-income type of lifestyle for people, needs to be discussed. What I'm seeing in Marquette, and, you know, it's kinda sad, some of the stuff I saw in Lake Geneva, the stuff that I've seen in Traverse City, the stuff I've seen in Scottsdale, Arizona, stuff I've seen in Park City, Utah, there's an awful lot of really high-dollar people that fly in, fly out. My wife and I came here purposely to stay. But we have to acknowledge that this is not just a housing program. You raise the income of people, the affordability of houses goes up, right? If you continually work to drive middle-income jobs out of the city, the affordability's gonna go down. So I just want you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
I have a few comments. I would like to be kept abreast of when the joint committees are meeting, when the city meets with the Planning Commission and the county commissions. I know they're on no bus, but sometimes things are real late getting on there, or sometimes the ad hoc housing committee meetings didn't get on there. I have, I would like to attend those because I have nine out of the 15 recommendations in number two, "Review and update city policies and codes," that I would like to have answers to, or at least discussion with some of the decision-makers in, regarding those issues. And I just, since Grand Rapids was brought up, I, I have to bring this up. My experience with Grand Rapids is, I have two children grown with families who live in Grand Rapids. The four adults in those two families are employed within the city boundaries of Grand Rapids, and guess what? They don't, my children don't live in the city of Grand Rapids because they can't afford it. We're not unique, and Grand Rapids keeps coming up. And yes, they've done a lot. I hope Marquette can do a lot, but it's, it's not the perfect answer. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I was sitting back at the meeting, thinking, "I don't like sounding negative when I address this commission." But what you're doing now is so consequential to the current status of the city and the future status of the city, and there's too many opportunities to make bad decisions. I just read on my phone while we were sitting here that the huge hospital's gonna be sold to Northern for a dollar, and all I keep thinking of is what happens when this city gets involved in any way, shape, or form of a transaction where land is transferred for a dollar. And I'm thinking of the sale of the Cliftow Chemical Company property, and how they've managed to bring back 100%, 200% on that by selling. managed to bring back 100%, 200% on that by selling one end to Bioplasma and the other end to Northern, each for a dollar. These are not dollar decisions. This is literally life and death for this city. And I think what concerns me about this report is the idea there's something wrong with the city the way it is now. And I want you to look into yourselves, thinking, what is wrong with our culture right now? I can tell you that our particular city is not going to be as attractive to all these people who want to come to us if we don't stop throwing garbage on the ground. Because I can attest, and I had the city manager, God love her, come out and attest, the sheer amount of garbage in this city is overwhelming our facilities to deal with it. And I've never talked to anyone who'll admit to throwing anything on the ground. It must be elves that come in at night. So when you talk about increased density, Commissioner Bonso, you frighten me. Because with more people, there's more garbage. And I don't have an answer for that because I can't get anybody to admit they're throwing garbage on the ground. But I can tell you that these changes you're planning for this city, I once was tasked with changing a patent portfolio for a major corporation. We had to get 494 rows down by 242, so we had room for additional patents. It took me five years to effectuate that change. It was that complicated, and so many people had to be involved. I appreciate that you want to move forward. I am not negative. I am begging you not to go forward fast. You come up with one more $1 sale for this city for any particular purpose, and you will cement your legacy as the same commission who bought Cliftdale Chemical Company for $1 and gave us 60 years of horrible situations. So please, don't go fast.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Antonio Adon, 111 East Berega, here in downtown Marquette. First, I want to just acknowledge the committee and the commissioners tonight for acknowledging such an important topic here. I mean, I think this is, without a doubt, I, in my opinion, it's not a one-generation kind of, you know, topic or, you know, issue that we're going to face. I think this is generational, all the way from students that are graduating that want to stay in town, to senior citizens that are on a fixed budget and have to pay taxes and, you know, all that good stuff. But for the most part, I know a lot of hard work going into this, as a volunteer myself on the ad hoc housing committee. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve. I do want to go back to the comments that were made tonight from Commissioner Hill. I think the data is super important. I think having that long-term, long-haul solution is going to be dictated by how much work we put in today into the data, having the density be figured out. I mean, that's a horde that's really charged these days, and really, it doesn't, it comes down to the fine details that are put into that. So thank you for bringing that up. That's really important. Lastly, I will say that, as, the more I thought about this, as I was going through the committee, learning from the different variety of topics and opportunities to bring in guest speakers, one common denominator that I saw that I think the city could help facilitate, along with other commissions or joint, you know, commissions, is going to be the development and developers. The developers are critical in this. We may not have, you know, the most, the highest of opinions about them and how they build and how they spend their money and where they, you know, where they get their labor from, but without that, you know, it's not the city's job, I think I've heard this again and again, to bring in and build houses. That's not what everyone is here tonight for, but I do want to acknowledge that. For me, it's just, how do we team up with developers? How do we find a critical point where there is enough mass, there is enough opportunity to really make a difference? And I think we can. I think in the town of 20,000, you know, city of 30,000, you know, building a couple hundred units doesn't make a big difference, whether we all believe it or not. But, and thank you so much, again, for everyone tonight, for being here, for putting in this issue at the top. And I, I'm very happy and pleased about that. So, again, thanks.
Anyone else for public comment?
All right, public comment is now closed. We are moving into comments from the commission, and then we have comments from the city manager. I will go ahead and do reverse alphabetical again. We'll start with Stonehouse and go down to Bonso.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, something that didn't come up this session, though, was the impact of the temporary rental program and the impact that that's going to have from legislation coming out from the state. For those of the audience that, not being familiar with it, this is the, if you, what are we calling it? Airbnb, in effect?
Short-term rental?
Short-term rental program, which allows people to rent a home in a city for a week, let's say, and do that repetitively if they desire, depending on the value of the homeowner willing to allow his home to be rented. A city limit set down to 250 properties, we do that, so we still keep residents in the city of Marquette and not just outside owners of property. But that's 250. The city has decided, based on our ordinance, lots of public input, lots of time, been doing that about, I think, three, four years now. The state of Michigan has decided, based on the leadership of Ed McBroom, our local senator, and among others, that the state of Michigan will now eliminate all authority from cities to manage short-term rentals. So in other words, short-term rental program, which is finally signed off by the governor upcoming, looks like will happen, then Katy bar the door. If you want to have a short-term rental, you can have a short-term rental. So a property that normally might be affordable housing and might be helping to solve the problem that we're trying to work on tonight goes away and now becomes a rental property. And we can expect the same impact to probably be occurring with some of the Northern rental programs material. Again, the impact across the city is difficult to say, but certainly, it is not a positive for affordable housing and can be defined perhaps as a kick in the teeth. But we have had great discussion tonight, certainly some variance of opinion, and that's good, because what will come out of it will be a stronger document and a stronger program. So thank you, Your Honor, for the time.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. Thanks for a terrific conversation tonight from both the public and the members of the committee, commissioner's staff. Really appreciate the level of care and thought, and I anticipate that we're going to continue to do that as we go forward, as we think about how the city is going to maybe evolve? How about that? I mean, things are always changing. You never step in the same river twice, and we are, the community, the jobs that were here, to your point, 10, 15 years ago are not the jobs that are here today. And so I think it is a very important question to think about. We will be thinking about the entirety of the city as we go through the master plan process, and some of the things that were brought up today will certainly continue that conversation going forward. I do want to say, there's going to be a meeting on December 8th and 9th to talk about housing with the Intergovernmental Group. That hasn't been brought up yet, but that's going to be happening. I'm certainly going to be there and bringing up the things that I've heard on the doors, as I was knocking doors from the community members. I, let's see, I think, I guess I'll say this. I think there's a lot in our current master plan that we have to build off of, particularly the pieces about a walkable community, a community that where we have the ability to feel safe and protected, and we have access to the great recreation that we have. So I do think that we have some things to build off of in that, but I think this notion, we can say where we want as a community through our zoning, where folks are going to live. And that's what I'm saying, it's not that this, that we, we as a community can shape what the community is going to look like. The folks who had the vision to say that Matson Park was going to become a park from being a coal field, we can bring that vision to how people live here in this community. We have giant parcels that are empty. Oh, that's what, I knew there was something I was going to say. My reading of the press release today from NMU and Duke LifePoint is, yes, there was a dollar, but there was also $10 million going from Duke LifePoint to NMU Foundation over, as part of this deal, right? That's what I read. Yeah. Yeah, so there's another $10 million behind that dollar, just to be, not clearly, not exactly defined, but that is there. Not that, just reporting what I read in the press release. So there's, it's more than a dollar. And, and I, so I just wanted to make that statement, and thank everyone again for this thoughtful conversation, and let's keep it going, and let's bring in some data and maps. Thanks.
Pro Tem Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think we had a lot of great discussion tonight, and this is a good milestone for us to begin some serious, hard work now, moving forward after this document. But I think a lot of good conversation happened here, and I also would ask Mr. Thompson, if you could contact myself or any other member of the commission with some of the specific details that you're having issues with that drove that kind of cost up when building your home? I think moving forward with some of these discussions, that's, those kind of details would be useful to us. Would like to thank all the members of the public that came and spoke tonight as well. I think there was an important aspect that got brought up more from the public side than we discussed here on the commission, but the jobs aspect side of the ratio that comes with the housing. If I thought, three years ago, there was nine people in Marquette that I graduated from high school with, and my wife and I included in that, and out of those nine, my wife and I are the only ones that are left still in Marquette because the rest could not afford to continue to live here. You know, I recognize, and I've seen it myself, how hard it is for people to live here, and it's not just from the housing side, but also from the lack of, we don't have the jobs to support our inflated housing market. I think that should also be something we consider discussion moving forward, if there's any way the commission can maybe try to assist with that. But I also would like to thank Commissioner Stonehouse for bringing up the short-term rental legislation. Yet again, another example of how Lansing is typically doing the opposite of what communities want them to be doing, but I'll behave and not go into that. And with that, I'm going to yield.
Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. First, I want to thank all the commissioners and all the residents for the wonderful discussion that happened today. I look forward to all the discussions that we'll have in the future when we vet, when we fully vet out and finalize each of these decisions and recommendations that we go forward with. It's been a highly-charged night with many very specific opinions, and I can only hope that when we come to these public forums, we have just as many people there putting forth their in-opinions and making sure that we make all the right decisions, because the decisions can only be made with the public and private, our public and us working together to make sure that we're making the right steps going forward for all of our community members and for the city as a whole. And I also wanted to say, happy early Thanksgiving to everyone.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you. Just as a follow-up on the short-term rental thing, if you're here and you care about our housing, this is very significant for Marquette and for the rest of the state. And contacting our Senator McBroom is very important. And if you haven't done it and you're afraid to do it, it's very, very easy. Go on his website, there's a little place where you can just send a message, and they do pay attention to those. So, you know, it's important that every one of us have a chance to, or take the effort to contact McBroom. On a totally different note, I want to congratulate our Downtown Development Authority Director Becky Finkel on being appointed to the state board. You know, her involvement at the state level is indicative of the leadership that she brings to our DDA, and having her at that state level will serve our community as she brings back to us some of the best practices in downtown development. So thank you, Becky, and congratulations, and thank you for your willingness to commit that extra hours to serve on the state board. Thank you.
Commissioner Bonso?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first of all, I just want to thank all my colleagues in the commission for supporting the ad hoc housing committee's final report tonight, and also to the members of our committee, many of whom are here, or were here at one time, and who put in so many hours and so much effort to get us to the point we're at now, where we can start making some real, you know, tangible progress that hopefully people in Marquette will feel in their daily lives. I also want to echo Commissioner, or Mayor Pro Tem Mayor, you know, in inviting Mr. Thompson, I'd be happy to, you know, we have some recommendations in the final report about regulatory issues, but I would be, we can always learn more, and I'd be happy to talk with you if you want to get in touch, and I would extend that invitation to anybody else who spoke tonight as well. I think some really valid points were brought up. I'd love to try and answer questions if anybody has them. So please don't hesitate to reach out. My contact info is on the city website. I'd be happy to speak to you after the meeting as well. I, of course, as the city manager noted, we will be having more discussion about housing-related issues coming up at our next meeting. I'll be sharing some more information about that in the coming week, but, you know, we are certainly making progress and moving forward and having some important discussions on this issue. There is a problem with housing affordability, and there is a lot that we can do as the city of Marquette on our own, but especially in partnership with others, with other entities in the community. That's the big takeaway from this report, and I think that we will make a lot of progress in the coming months and years on this issue, if we keep that in mind, and we can all acknowledge that reality. I also want to thank Commissioner Stonehouse for bringing up short-term rentals. It is truly one of the most critical issues. I mean, more so than any individual recommendation in our report. The ability to continue to regulate short-term rentals is absolutely critical, so I would encourage folks to contact Senator McBroom. I mean, go ahead and contact other senators downstate as well. The state senate's going to be voting on it. Contact Governor Whitmer's office and urge her to use her veto in the likely event that this legislation passes. The legislation to deregulate, to prohibit local governments from having any regulations on short-term rentals would be devastating for our community. Our housing committee did support, for the most part, our current short-term rental policies, including the provision that we have a cap of 250 units in the city. And, you know, I know some people will make the argument, and have made the argument, that, well, this could actually be a way for, you know, homeowners to make some extra money on the side, perhaps in some cases, but we know that about, only about 10% to 15% of the short-term rentals currently operating in the city of Marquette are homestays, where the homeowner is actually living in the house, like where this short-term rental unit is located. The rest are investment properties, and, you know, I think it's reasonable to assume most of those could otherwise be long-term rental units. So that is a major problem. And, yeah, with that, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and thank you all for coming to this meeting. It was great to see a lot of public input and participation tonight.
So this item has been on our list for a while, and it feels really good to finally have it approved. We've got some action items that we want to take, you know, immediately, starting next Monday night, that are related to the approval that just happened, and that will only continue. There's a lot we want to accomplish this year, but it feels good to kind of hit one right off the bat, right here in November, after the election that just happened. So we'll continue that momentum. I appreciate, again, the committee, Commissioner Bonso's staff, and I think, you know, we've got a lot of really hard work, but good work ahead of us on other critical tasks as well. One thing I wanted to mention is, you know, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I know Black Friday is typically the shopping season. This is some supply chain issues, if folks haven't heard, so just really encourage folks to shop local. I know Saturday is Small Business Saturday, so if you can get out and shop either downtown or other small businesses here in Marquette, certainly that helps our local businesses, and you don't have to wait for the item to ship to your door, which may come after Christmas anyway, if you're shopping for the Christmas season, so. That's all I have. City manager, anything from you?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. We are adjourned at 7:04 PM. Thanks, everyone.